It's probably.
Okay, let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who are living from which it stands. One nation under God, in his own with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're all covered.
Jenny David.
Here's.
Roger Mayhew. Charles Wiltsy.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Surfer.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Anything you guys see on there that could be delayed or you want to.
I'm fine.
Good.
Want to add? Question regarding the meeting paid on July the third.
We'll put that down on K.
Good call.
Any other additions or corrections?
Item three, public comment. Any in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item four, appointments, Ryan Veder, planning and zoning administrator. You got three items on there. Give me. Quick.
You're out of the quick?
Yes.
Real quickly, it looks like number one is tax amendment oh, one dash two, five height exceptions. Real quickly. The ordinance limits the height of certain structures at a hundred feet tall. Every time we do a, a cell tower here in Ogumah County, they're obviously over a hundred feet tall. Years and years and years of self was we've been doing cell towers. They've always gone in front of ZBA and got any variance for that height. The ZB has never not approved the height of the cell tower. And generally speaking, when we have something like that, that we give variances on, and if we keep approving variances, it's always best to go back and look as well too. So this tax amendment actually will exempt telecommunications towers and possible wind energy conversion systems or windmills in the future from that height part of the ordinance. So for the planning commission standpoint, it's, it's, we always get individuals that come to those EVA meetings when we're discussing the heights and they always have, there's always usually complaints about cell towers. Unfortunately, they come to that first meeting. That meeting for the cell towers is just basically on the height. We've never really got any real complaints about the height of these towers. So I've done probably a dozen cell towers since I've been here and the ZB has never not approved one. So problem with limiting the height on cell towers, the shorter you get, the more you need. So usually those cell tower heights are usually in excess of hundred fifty, they're usually pushing two hundred feet. So since they've never denied one, we thought it would be, take that out of that process, kind of speed that process up a little bit. And then number two, text amendment, number two was to add open air businesses as a special use of the agricultural rural preservation. Ordinance district, I should say, and it will, it will go into the egg district as a special use, so they will still require to have special use approval and site plan approval from the planning commission. I know there might be some concerns of adding too many things to the agricultural district as far as open air sales and those things go. However, as a special use of planning commission will still get an opportunity to review those. They will look at the same, the same things that we normally looked at those. We look at the site, we look at fencing, we look at proper locations and and parking as well too. So that's really the only two that I, I have pointed in. There was a, the planning commission did prove at their last board meeting, they did want to move their meeting start time up from seven PM to six PM. So that is item number three, where we've, we've changed that schedule for the remainder of the 25 year ago. Have those meetings start at six o'clock instead of seven. Lately, it seems like a lot of our meetings have been going two hours. And then some, so nine o'clock versus eight o'clock, eight o'clock is a little bit better for a lot of the members on the planning commission. I have no complaints with it either. Get home a little bit earlier than I normally do.
Comments, Commissioner Scott?
What is the height you're looking at setting the? Setting at that for, for the towers.
Towers usually it's, the applicant will come in here and propose a, a height. Generally that height is a hundred ninety-five to a hundred ninety-nine feet. I believe if they get over two hundred feet tall, there's additional requirements by the FAA as far as lighting and reporting goes. So since I've been here, I don't think we've approved a cell tower over two hundred feet tall. So for instance, the cell tower that's out at the fairgrounds, that is a hundred ninety-nine foot tower. In the future, if we get to the point where we have windmills and things of that nature here, they will be much, much taller than two hundred feet. Industry standard right now is.
So you're not set up.
So we're not setting a cap on that. It'll be on a case to case basis where they'll, they'll review that, look at it there.
Okay. The open air business, that includes the food wagons?
No, no, no. Open air business is.
I struggled with this one, approving this one. I did, I didn't, I didn't, it made me uneasy.
They are currently these, they're allowed currently only in B one, B two, B three zoning districts. Their retail establishments operate substantially in the open air, including two, but not limited to bicycle, utility truck or trailer, motor vehicle, boats, home equipment, sales, repair or rental services, outdoor display area of sales of garage, motorhomes, recreational vehicles, manufactured homes, snowmobiles, swimming pools and similar activities. Retail sales of trees, fruit, vegetables, shrubbery, plants, seeds, topsoil, humus, humus fertilizer, trellises, lawn furniture, playground equipment and other home garden supplies and equipment, but not including lumberyards. Commercial or public, private tennis courts, archery courts, shuffleboard, horseshoe, miniature golf, golf driving ranges, child's amusement parks or similar recreational uses, transient or permanent. So there's quite a few uses there. Open air basically means products out. They're generally outside of a building that are out there for sale. So a lot of these uses such as, you know, motor vehicles, boats, snowmobiles, recreation. Those a lot of times are going to have to be, those require usually a license from the state of Michigan to sell as well too. So there's going to be some regulations on their part as well too. So I, I don't believe we're going to be opening up the egg district to a whole bunch of new sales on that. Yeah. Planning commission will have to look at the necessity of it, the location of it and look at the, the site, the site plan that's provided and they can be stringent on that or is lax on that as they want to be. Moving forward, I would believe they probably would look at those a little bit closer than, than maybe they have in the past, especially in the egg districts. Personally, I probably will see if we see any of these go in the egg districts, they would probably be located along the major thoroughfares in overall county. Like M thirty-three and M fifty-five, but just seem to be the high traffic areas where somebody may want to put an open air business in the future.
The zoning board of appeals, do you still have an opening?
Still have an opening. I've got one individual that Joe Peterson had recommended and I have not spoken with him yet. But I believe we spoke about an individual at all too.
Okay.
That's all.
Commissioner, what's it?
There's a lot here with this open air.
It does, it does cover a lot.
Yeah, yeah. So this is just kind of a progression thing that we've never really covered this and now we, we are, or we have before, but we're adding.
We're adding it. There is an individual that has, is currently looking at doing something in the agricultural district. As far as I believe in what he wants to sell is like homes, like hut homes and manufactured homes. Possibly new and used. He's actually looking along the M thirty-three corridor, which in that particular area, probably as we go through the master plan review process, we'll probably be looking at some of these parcels on M thirty-three and possibly on M fifty-five is maybe future commercial parcels. One of the things we don't like to do is we don't like to spot zone parcels. So we don't, don't really want to take that parcel in the middle of an egg and turn it into commercial. Number one, it's spot zoning, it's frowned upon. And number two, when we change it to strictly commercial, now we're opening that parcel up to all the other commercial type uses in that district. So the egg district doesn't have some of those commercial type businesses like restaurants and drive-throughs or McDonald's and River Kings or large big box stores. So with putting that in the egg district, it's kind of helping us not spot zone some of those spots, which I'm sure as the county grows, those areas might be more might see more business type uses or more commercial parcels in the future. If that's the way the, the future planning goes for those, for those areas or even for those townships. So, but that's a little bit of a process. So.
Commissioner Mayhew.
No, good.
Commissioner Saverick.
Glad to see you got the coordination with the airport on. In that, in that language, I think that's.
Language is important, you know? That, that was the other part of that language is a lot of times when people are looking here, they're not aware of the airports.
Right.
It kind of gets that on their radar right away and they have to deal with me when it comes to the airport zoning anyway. So it makes a little bit easier.
That is a follow-up to Craig's question. Is there anything currently regarding food trucks, zoning? There's more and more of these popping up and I've had some people make some inquiries and I'm like, I know they got to be licensed by health department. I said, but I don't think that there's any county zoning per se that has anything.
Not particularly for food trucks. So we, we had quite a bit of discussion at the last planning commission meeting on these food trucks and you know, every parcel have a use associated with it. When I look at a food truck and we look at what the closest use to that is would be like a restaurant or a drive-through restaurant. So actually by definition, it would be considered a drive-through restaurant, which is considered a special use. I go back years ago and when I had a, a business who would approach me because they were worried about food trucks at that point in time and their worry is that they didn't have to go through the same procedures and everything else that a standalone business has to do. And I totally agree with that. One of the food trucks that has popped up here lately is actually sitting in front of a vacant business, which if that was moved inside of that business, they would have to get special use since they planned approval for them. So just because they're sitting outside of it and they're on wheels, doesn't necessarily absolve them from that process. So we've had a little bit of discussion. I'm looking at some other ordinances and some other communities, see how they're dealing with them. Actually, West Branch Township does their own zoning.
Right.
They have an ordinance for that, which I actually wrote back when we were having a few problems with food trucks as well too. I have been looking into Gladwin, city of Gladwin and the county of Gladwin as well too. I have emails out to Sheboygan County to see how they're, they handle it. So we're going to kind of take that information, but.
I'm safe to say we're, that we're looking into it and there would be more coming.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Short, the short answer.
Yes.
My concern with this open businesses is, yeah, the, the length of stuff, turning agricultural land into, but again, they have to come to us for approval. And the group's a pretty good group. They're pretty well-rounded.
Pretty well-rounded. And some of those concerns that go with those is, I mean, it's not as easy as just someone clearing out a spot on their parcel maybe and throwing a bunch of stuff on it. You know, we, we're going to be looking at entrances and exits. If they are on M fifty-five or M thirty-three, then they have to deal with M dot. If not, they'll have to deal with the road commission.
Yeah, just because they get approved doesn't mean like livestock operations, they have to be, there's laws that they have to be so far from the road. Like there's a lot more than just here you go.
We'll be looking at their, you know, their, their alleys, the driveways, the distances, if there's parking, if parking is how many they need and where it's going to be available. So it's not, it's not a super simple process for somebody to go through. And it, it could be that the planning commission, one of the, one of the deal breakers for some of these people that might want to do that is that the, the planning commission requires them to pave their parking lot. That can be as a significant amount of money that somebody is not willing to put up to do that. So so all those things can be taken into consideration. Location, location, location is, is kind of a big thing as well too. Made the comment, you know, I, somebody two miles off of M thirty-three on Scribbler Road probably is not looking to do this just because the traffic isn't there for them, but but the future ones we can look at and they will have to come from the planning commission for that. And part of that process is the neighbors get a notice of, of it as well too. So if they have problems, questions or concerns, they can voice those to the planning commission as well. So got a super simple, easy process for them.
That's good.
Yes.
Thanks, Ryan. Have you, did you get that email from that property up there again from Mr. Short this week?
Yeah, I've talked to him. I emailed him yesterday. I have got a lengthy list of violations there. So he sent me another picture today. So when I did respond to him, I'm trying to make sure we hit every single one of the violations that we need through. And obviously the township, I believe is, is working on their end as well too.
Okay. Just want to make sure you've seen that email.
Yep, yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item five A, region nine area agency on aging proposed twenty twenty-six annual implementation plan.
Commissioner Mayhew may have more information on this, the supplement or not. This is the we've got the area agency on aging, but it's their annual plan that we see every year. They have to submit this for their own funding. They may have talked about this at a commission on aging meeting.
They haven't yet, but.
Okay. Yeah, actually it's several weeks yet before they require the board's final approval on it. I've glanced through this and frankly, I don't see anything in here that is out of the ordinary, anything that we haven't really seen in the last, you know, in at least five years that I've been here. But this is a necessary step. They need to get approval from all of their counties and they're asking you to pass a resolution to approve that plan.
Is there funding necessary? Gosh, two thousand, is there funding rate around the same from state and federal? Cause I know that was a concern.
I believe this is through a federal, I don't know if the state's involved in it or not, but federal monies that are involved and they're required to have these plans on file. But that's where they also want the approval of all the local legislative bodies saying that they approve it. Now, is this funding guaranteed? Is it going to happen? I think everybody would take a step back and just wait and see. I, I don't know what, from a federal budget standpoint, what is included right now. So there may be some funding at risk there. But they would nevertheless want to do the programs that they've got listed in their plan here, should the funding become available. You know, this has been so routine over the years. It's one of those funds that nobody ever really questioned and it would always be there and maybe now it'll be questioned. But in any event, the plan that they would like to implement for the year is what they are asking you to approve.
Can you have some?
I can provide a little bit of insight on this. The area agency on aging is a division of Nimsco. Ogumah County has a representative that sits on the board. Unfortunately, at the last board meeting, because I read the minutes, she was absent from the board meeting. So that's why you didn't get an info from each of your commission on eighteen meeting from her because she wasn't there. Again, it's like Tim said, this is a something that they're, that they've done every year. You know, of course they're concerned about the funding issue. The money is all pass-through funds. Doesn't, there's no funding coming out of county coffers for this. It's pass-through funds from the federal state government and they're going to operate on whatever funding they get. You know, I mean, if funds get cut, they're going to have to make tough decisions as to what they're going to cut. You know, hopefully they don't have to because we know senior meals is a a serious issue, you know, not only the meals, but also rest and services. You know, in-home tour providers, things like that, that this, this agency provides to citizens. So, but they're going to operate with whatever funding they get. So.
Questions, Commissioner?
No.
Hey, what's the next? MDHHS competitive procurement proposal.
I've looked at the material here for you for tonight simply because we talked about it last week. And this is the issue with well, Lance and their presentation, we heard about what's happening at the state level and what they need to do with the funding. I think the chair asked last week, which I thought was a great idea is that we invite somebody from, who's a supporter of this to come in and talk to you before you do anything. And we've only had what, five days since that meeting. So having that chance really find out who to contact, much less invite them in. I don't get the impression that this is something that's urgently needed and it's very important, but you don't need it like next week in order to make some deadline. And if that's the case, I really would like the opportunity to get ahold of somebody so that you've got the full picture before you're asked to vote.
Thomas, Commissioner Scott.
Well, I don't think you're going to find a lot of people in support of it, but someone that you could is obviously just call MDHHS
Right.
and find out from them if they can send a representative or have someone on Zoom and tell us, because I think that would be, I mean, that's right straight from them and then we can hear it. And I think it was Commissioner Scott who brought that up and it's good to hear their side.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, coming from a private sector career. And we took over a lot of public sector operations in the garbage business because many, many municipalities did their own garbage. And every time we came in, oh, you will never do it as good. And you know, if somebody works at a place for thirty years, they're not going to tell you the place needs to be taken over privately. It just isn't going to happen. That's why I'm, I'm not always in favor of, of employees taking over management positions. I think a lot, a lot of things need fresh eyes and a fresh way of looking at things. Because that's just my philosophy on it. So, and you just, we're here in one side. We're just here in one side. You know, and I just hate to make decisions based on one-sided information.
I just have one more. And I, I understand where you're coming from and I, I respect that. I do ask though, Tim, that we try to keep this moving forward so we can get the MDHHS side and and keep moving this forward and we don't sit on it.
And I don't want to sound defensive, but it's only been five days and two of those are a week. So.
And I understand that. I'm just asking that.
My week has been nuts trying to crush.
I understand that. I'm not, I'm not upset that of anything. I'm just saying I'd like to see what I'm moving forward.
Anything else? Okay. USDA limited English proficiency policy.
Couple of items in play here. When I met with the USDA rep, when they did their three-year audit, one of the things they'd like us to do is this limited English proficiency review, I guess, which is the first part of the handout that you see. And they'd like us to, and they've given a number of resources here to look into, determine if we have a community with limited English proficiency in the county. If so, what language do they speak? And then come up with some plans for dealing with that population if they need to come in for county services. Ironically, a week before this audit, they had a exchange with the circuit court where they were needing an interpreter for exactly this reason. It's very real. I think the goal is I'm reading through this really is just to be prepared for a situation like that that might pop up. They even, Bryce even handed me a paper that has, I would say a couple of dozen different languages with one sentence written on it. It says, I speak English or I'm not even going to try it in French, but I read it and I at least recognized it. But I said, there are a couple of dozen different languages and he suggested that all of our departments could have that sheet if they have somebody that comes to the counter. Clearly isn't speaking English. You hand them the sheet, they tell you which language they're speaking. The next step though is to find somebody who can interpret on their behalf. But that, that's the overall goal for that part. But the second part on the last page, I guess that's two pages is a grievance procedure. And this is if someone comes in and they are or have some level of disability and they feel they've been discriminated against, they would like us to pass a policy that says, this is our procedure. If you believe you've been discriminated against, this is pretty standard language. Actually attracts pretty closely with what we have for our harassment language and that grievance process and who to contact. And this is a policy that they're asking us to do because we accept funds from USDA. And this is one of their requirements to make sure that policies are in place for all their grantees. So that, and unfortunately I haven't had a chance to fill in the blanks, you know, insert Ogumah County and the names and so on. But as you read through this, you know, it's pretty easy to know who's going to be there. Again, not something that we need to do like immediately next week. I would like an opportunity to go through those steps on that limited English proficiency so that you have an idea of what we're talking about or what's in there. And then maybe we brainstorm if there's something more we can do. I, I like to sign your radar, just like that other policy though. It is kind of important. I don't know to what extent we want to go, but if this is a requirement to accept a USDA grant, then probably something we should consider. And like I said, there's nothing in there that I think is going to put us at any level of disadvantage. It's just giving people a roadmap if they believe there's been a discrimination act of where to go and where to report it. And as I said, I think it's just good information to have a limited English proficiency. If there is a population that speaks primarily Spanish, that might be a good idea for us all to have somebody in our contact list to call if we ever need that service. So that's, that's just a decent exercise, but really not a policy implication so much as that second part.
Commissioner Saverick.
Yes, it's just, it's just having that resource available. I mean, I know past experience with the courts, there were times when we had to have interpreters, whether it be somebody that's, you know, deaf, you know, so somebody that did sign language, things like that, you know, so we've got developed a list of at least resources as Tim said, so I think it's a good idea. It's probably going to be, or the entire thing is going to be a requirement if we accept USDA funding and.
Commissioner Mayhew.
I've heard they got deals headphones you can put on and talk to the people, interpret it. The kids and cowards are like, I don't want to vote them.
Commissioner Scott.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Wiltsy.
No, I don't have anything.
Michigan Works has something very similar. They have money set aside for, and they have policies and procedures. So if you run into any roadblocks, I definitely would reach out. That was recently on the agenda.
I'm going to call Penny anyway here and bring that.
I see.
The other thing is, is just because it sparks the conversations. I, I talked to Tim on Friday about a new system up there. We have to do something for hearing. Even we had individuals in here last week that couldn't hear in the audience. So we have to, we have to make some accommodations. So we need to expedite that.
Yeah. And actually Tom's on it. He's looked at a few different systems. One of the things he mentioned to me, he's got, when we're doing the Zoom that sometimes some equipment, there is serious feedback involved in that. So that's one of the challenges he needs to overcome, but he's already checking into it. So I'm looking forward to something pretty soon here.
Okay. County building security structure.
Well, I think we finally have a model that all of the players are, I should say stakeholders are in agreement with. The whole chart is a little bit more complicated than the one I presented to you before, but it's one that security personnel I think will work. There was a discussion about Rick stepping back from the security coordinator role and his reasoning was he's not physically here often enough to really know what's going on, particularly like with the courts and when assignments need to be made and so on. So the compromise, he would continue to do that role, but two of our security personnel, Mr. Pacquiao and Mr. Kelly Barnett would take on a little bit of additional responsibility for the day-to-day monitoring of the schedules and any changes that might happen to happen. And Mr. Barnett would also monitor time sheets for compliance with, filling out the time sheet in that case. And they would do that and continue to be paid at that bailiff rate. And then of course we'll also have bailiffs who are assigned to the hall duty and to the courts. So Rick was okay with that, splitting up the responsibilities that way. He still would be responsible for forwarding any information about security activities to the courts or to myself. And he will also create the monthly calendar for assignments. The other thing that was discussed with the courts, and actually again, I, I think a good idea, and we may have talked about it here already too, is the actual block of time that each of our groups, if you will, will, will work. And they settled on an eight till twelve thirty shift. That's changed. They work from eight to twelve. The second shift or the afternoon shift will be the twelve thirty to five o'clock. And that will add a half hour to their guarantee pay. But those are blocks that people would be scheduled and then most of the time on Thursdays, but sometimes on a Tuesday, somebody would be scheduled to the five o'clock shift to cover the building for board meetings. And if there were any other things that go on, we had uh, the building for board meetings. And if there were any other things that go on, we had, uh, elections, uh, when that went on. Uh, the same concept would apply. And of course, anything after nine thirty, I don't know how late you guys were here.
For elections?
Yeah.
Brett and Tracy were here really, really late, but I think we were leaving between eleven and midnight.
Okay. So that, that was one of the things that we discussed and we would just continue to have somebody when we knew there was election issues like that, schedule somebody for that evening shift. If they had to be here past the nine thirty, then they adjust to an hourly, uh, after that. There wouldn't be another four and a half hour block. Everything else roughly is the same, uh, the, the pays down there, the, with everything being equalized, um, it would just be the twenty-one seventy-one an hour and then the twenty-two seventy-one for the coordinator. Uh, that's, that's the pay rate now. And that's something you would consider each year with the budget if you needed to bump it up at all. But that's where we would sit today. And so that's, uh, pretty well it. Uh, when we left the courts, I think, uh, everybody was very comfortable with this. It, um, gets us in compliance with that, uh, sick time accrual that we have to do now. Uh, and I think, um, once we get the UKG worked out and they're working on that now. I think, uh, you know, particularly with one security screener that I talked to, he thinks it's gonna be an awful lot easier for them to just touch their button and they're done. Uh, so from that end, it's taken care of. And it also addresses any overtime, obviously, if anybody's working greater than forty hours, I don't think anybody assigned to this will be anywhere close to that. But if they are, we at least have it addressed.
Comments, Commissioner Scott?
Well. Are any of the security people work in the sheriff's office? Who, who, so overtime could be a a factor.
Yep.
Well, okay.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Uh, I know there's been a lot of discussion on this with all the players and seems like everybody's happy with what we have now. And I think, uh, it's good to see that, uh, there's good communication and transparency and took a little bit, but I think we got where we need to be.
Commissioner Rayo.
Gonna be what's gonna be.
Commissioner Rick.
I like this. I'm glad to see this. I give thumbs up.
Uh, old jail and veterans memorial.
Um, we had a conversation after law enforcement meeting. Ladonna asked, uh, to meet with me and Commissioner Wiltie because he was here for a different meeting. And so it was just convenient to draw him in. They had an issue with the veterans memorial when, when they did the small officer memorial. Um, it it just simply the location of the memorial across the street. There was, uh, very hard for anybody to hear the speakers because of the traffic going through. I have to understand the street cleaner came through, which if you've ever been next to one of those, they can be pretty loud and they're very slow. So that noise was interfering. There are also conflicts with traffic as people try to get across the street and so on. And what Ladonna asked that we consider is if, and when we finally get to a point where we're doing something with the old jail building, that we consider moving that memorial to another location. And one of the things that she suggested, just, this is just strictly for conversation, is that the old jail parcel would become parking in the parking lot where you see me park on the corner over there, be converted to just a small park, uh, maybe a gazebo in there, some flags, whatever, uh, and that would serve as that memorial. Uh, she had a image that she sent to us and I wish I would have duplicated that now, but it, it would work. There's no question about it. It would take some uh, commitment on the part of the county to make all of this happen. She didn't believe that there would be opportunity for private contributions to something like this. Uh, you know, particularly for maybe some of the veterans, uh, organizations and so on, or even our own Veterans Affairs Department might be able to, uh, participate in that. So that's, she just asked to put that on our radar. While as we were discussing it, Commissioner Wiltie and I, we said, well, how much does it gotta cost to tear that old jail down if that's what we want to do? Well, we didn't know. So, uh, through Karen's help, uh, she said some demolition projects with the land bank, we were able to get ahold of somebody who specializes that. Uh, and we walked through the building. Uh, he didn't give me what was, you know, be a quote, but just an estimate what he thought it might cost. And the number he threw out there was one hundred forty-eight thousand. Now rounded up to one fifty. Um, it was a little bit lower than I thought it was gonna be, uh, just because of the type of building that we're dealing with and what would happen to it. Now, that's just to take the building down. As I'm looking at that, that whole building is, um, erased. I mean, it's, it looks like there's a lot of ground that's been built up. And, you know, it could potentially all be flat. And so you don't even have stairs over here anymore to get to what might be a parking lot. It could all be at one level. Um, of course, the parking lot out here does need some attention too, with the asphalt. Might be a good idea to do it all at once. Or you take the building down and that becomes the new park or memorial or whatever we want to do. Well, in any event, you gotta get the building out of there to do it. And of course, the other, uh, challenge with that building is we have an awful lot of things that are stored in there right now. Uh, I know it's been suggested that we store that in the jail building across the street, but as the undersheriff has pointed out to me in conversation, that might work for a few years, but that takes off the table any chance of ever re-engaging as a jail in the building. So you've gotta find someplace for the storage one time or another. Uh, and some other things that we'll talk about next about, uh, using that jail. I mean, there may be some other uses. More in tune with what that building is, was built for that, that we could do. So in any event, um, there's a lot of things to think about. Uh, but the building over there as I was walking through, and I don't get over there that often, maybe a couple of times a year, uh, it's not getting any better. I can, I'll just say that. Uh, and, uh, it's pointed out, I think that somebody was saying those fire radios may be moved out of there soon, that that is an obstacle right now. We can't just get rid of the building. We've gotta, uh, uh, figure that part out too. But that looks, sounds like it's, uh, gonna resolve itself. Uh, so that, that's what I have to report on it. Um, we have talked about, um, uh, they actually passed a policy last week about use of delinquent tax funds. Um, not necessarily suggesting that we do that immediately, but that's something to keep in mind. That is a one-time capital type project that won't be ongoing for years, you know, like a, like a program might be. So that may be another source of funding. Uh, who knows, uh, what might be out there. There may be some organization that helps communities tear down buildings like that. I don't know, I've never looked that far into it. Uh, but that, that's what I've got so far. And, um, you know, if you want to, uh, put this sort of on the radar, you know, we can do that, revisit it every few meetings, uh, or, or not. That's your call.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Well, I know, um, my first year as commissioner, I was asked to speak at the fallen, uh, police officer memorial. So I know firsthand, um, it really is hard to hear much there with the traffic and everything else. Um, I really appreciate the fact that, um, Ladonna, you know, talked to Tim about this. I think it'd be a great idea. And obviously, you know, the first thing we think about is costs. Uh, I think we have a lot of local contractors for something of this importance. Uh, I'm not saying we gotta start a five oh one C three or anything, but I think if we start a group, um, once we, once we do have a plan, and I know there's a lot of things that gotta happen first, but I think a group could really get the ball rolling. Where between local contractors and Home Depot and Walmart, Myers, I think we probably could build this, again, because of the importance of what it's for. Um, you know, at a very low number, if any cost at all to the county. So. Um, I know there's a lot of things that gotta happen, but I think it's, I think it's a great idea and I'm looking forward to seeing how we navigate through this and, and what becomes of the old jail and how we do this.
Mr. Scott.
Uh, no, just nothing right now, nothing right now.
Mr. Rayo.
I know if you don't do nothing with the building, it will fall down. It, it, it can't stay that way.
Commissioner Rick.
When you did the watch, was he aware, did he go into crawl spaces? He wear that crawl spaces underneath that jail?
We tried to find access to that and couldn't.
Through the security garage, there's a great big metal thing you lift up and you go right down in it. So if he's not aware of the fact that there's a crawl space underneath there, that's probably gonna increase your cost because it's not on a slab. The other thing is there used to be underground storage tanks there for fuel. Uh, there are monitoring wells. They remove the tanks. They remove the contaminated soil supposedly, but there are monitoring wells over there where those, where that tank was. So there's another consideration if you're planning on landscaping, like cutting that hill down. Cause that could create an issue. I'm completely in favor of moving that veterans memorial. I agree a hundred percent to the traffic. I mean, I've participated over the years and it's horrible. The, not only the noise, but again, the traffic itself. If we could get that thing moved someplace. And I've talked to Ladonna too, and she's got some fantastic ideas in regards to, you know, she's already got some preliminary layout. Not really plans, but proposed some other places and done something like this. And she's got some really great ideas as to how to get some funding, you know, through local contributions, through veterans organizations, veterans themselves, you know, buy a brick kind of thing or whatever, you know, for X amount of dollars to raise funds for it. So I'm definitely a hundred percent in favor. And I think we need to keep it, you know, definitely keep this on the radar, but I'm just cautious about that old jail. Uh, you better get him back over there and get underneath there. And if you need to, you know, give me a call and I'll show you exactly where it's at. Paul probably knows where that, where's that too. But yeah, threaten to steal a security garage.
Also, if someone gets opportunity to look at some, that funding for that too, to see if there is any available. And since you're talking to Penny, add that on there. There are many, it, it grants, but I'd like to see this on the, um, committee of the whole agenda every three months, just again, so we don't lose sight of it. Uh, jail facility use.
Uh, this is a item again generated from a little brainstorming I did with Commissioner Wiltie. And that just is, we've got a building over there. Uh, there may be other activities that we can do, even though it's not being used specifically as a jail. You know, one of the things that we were kicking around was training, uh, you know, possibly, you know, if another county wanted to do training or if there were a correction officer training plan, our program that might be able to take advantage of that, um, just, you know, something that gets that building going. I haven't had a chance to talk to the sheriff or the undersheriff about this or even pursue anything any further than that. Uh, but again, this is sort of a brainstorming topic right now. I mean, of course, is that something we're even interested in? Uh, I know, um, uh, we can't really do anything without talking to the sheriff's office about it, uh, because I don't know day-to-day what's, needs to be secured over there and what doesn't, what type of activity would be useful and what wouldn't. Uh, but it's just the idea of, um, making as much use of the building as we can.
Paul, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I, I discussion about it definitely is something that should go on. But there's a lot of logistics that would have to go into that as far as you know, the different ideas that may come up through brainstorming. That was something you could use it for. Um, you know, M D O C would be another factor. I'm still waiting to see how, what kind of inputs we're gonna get from them here. Hopefully not to distant future, but so there'd be a lot of things that would have to be looked at and explored before any ideas really started to gain traction. But I understand the, the discussion. You know, the kitchen is one particular item right there. So again, how much can we use? What, what, what can we utilize it for overall things? I mean, we shouldn't start with the discussion. Jump through those hoops with M D O C and what they're gonna be looking at with us and, and take it from there. So.
Comments, Commissioner Wiltie?
No, I appreciate us, uh, just starting this conversation. I think it's part of our job to see what we can do to possibly generate money. I know it's gonna come with a lot of brainstorming and figuring out things, but, uh, we need to, we need to keep our eyes open and be figuring out what we can do to try to generate some money with that building.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, I do, I do not want to put, make a story given it out of it at all. I would really like to see some kind of a multi, multi-county.
Something.
Yeah, use, uh, whether it's confinement of women, because that seems to be an issue for every county. They gotta separate out the women and, and treat them differently and everything else. And if you had one central location where they all came to. Um, or juvenile detention, but it'd have to be, it would have to be multi-county and everybody had to pay the cost. You're not gonna be able, you can't do it without paying the cost and everybody would have to chip in. So that may never happen, but those are the kind of ideas that's going in my head. So.
Commissioner Rayo.
No.
I guess my question is, Paul, how much of that building is, and I haven't been over there since the conversion. I, I need to take a trip, but how much of that building is not being used?
Um, well, your control center. And then your, um, cell blocks in the pods. So the pods are currently not being used. The classrooms have been converted. Kitchen's not being used. Laundry room's still being used. Property room has been converted to storage. And the administrative portion of it. So you know, I, half of the building, I mean, there are big sections of it. The pods obviously are are, are big, but what do you do with those? And that's what should be all part of the discussion. On the juvenile, uh, facility idea, that was explored to a certain level with probate court. Um, he sent me a stack of paperwork back when we were discussing it. And that is, uh, won't, won't we ever be able to envision that in that facility with having to have adults also we didn't take in that thing. Just don't think we'd be able to overcome the hurdles that are involved with juveniles and unfortunately. But he, he sent me over a stack of paperwork like this with all the rules, regulations. I, that would be a monster undertaking and I just don't know if that's gonna be part of the conversation. But you know, the other things obviously doesn't hurt to talk and come up with ideas and if it's feasible, make it work. But we're always gonna keep in the back of our minds. We're also in the infancy of this. So you never gotta walk back and have to look at re-establishing something as a jail facility. We've gotta enable the physical plant to be not as costly as what is gonna have the employees, if that makes sense. So there's things to think about for this discussion. That's all.
Commissioner Rick.
I echo Commissioner Scott's thoughts on storage. Add them up, no storage. As far as the juvenile portion of it, a juvenile facility's gotta be standalone. You'll never overcome what the issues that Paul touched on. Juvenile just have to be standalone when you can. Basically impossible to take and house them with adults.
We, we could get back to a jail and maybe what will have to happen is more and more counties are gonna have to exercise the, their right to charge for staying. Now, the state law clearly defines that we can charge up to sixty dollars a day. If more and more counties would do that. If we could get sixty dollars a day, we can move them back in. Because it would pay for it. It would be a lot closer to paying for itself. But if we don't exercise that ability and these other counties, you know, they're, they're trying to collect ten and twenty dollars a day. I just don't understand why the state law is out there. It's clearly defined in the, in the state law. It says sixty dollars a day. I would think that every sheriff in every jail would jump on that opportunity to do that. I don't get it. I mean, it's, it's a service you provide. It's no different than the carpet cleaner that comes to your house. If he charges you sixty dollars an hour, he's gonna expect to get paid. And if you don't, you don't pay him because of whatever reason, he's gonna take you to court. So I just don't know why, why, I don't know why any county isn't doing it.
I'm gonna mimic, I agree on the storage thing. And I agree with the conversation, uh, Paul, that you're having. Obviously you have community, communications with numerous different, uh, surrounding facilities because of our remates going to different areas. If you could keep your eyes and ears open and conversation open as far as the needs, it'd be nice to hear what, uh, what is, what the needs are and what we have to do. So I'd, I'd like this to continue to be put on the agenda too. I don't know, monthly, but maybe five. Just so this don't, don't, uh, lose sight as well, yes?
When all this went bad before, I called down to Bay City. And he said, when the state puts prisoner in your jail, they pay thirty-five bucks a day. And that was way back then. But that's what they said they pay.
And that was way back then, but that's what they said they paid. They ain't paying 60 or 70 bucks. That's what they said they paid. Those laws says that the inmate pays the bill, not the state. The state law says that a county can charge the inmate up to $60 a day. It's not the state paying that.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I mean, they're convicted of a crime.
I understand Commissioner Scott pretty adamant about this and I, I do see what he's saying, but the problem is, is that the majority of people that go through the jail system financially do not have the money to pay that. I mean, you know that. I mean, that's, you know that.
I don't know if it's majority or not. I wouldn't say that.
It's just a bad cycle, but just keep in this conversation moving forward. Thank you.
Well, the thing is, is nobody's even trying it. Not, there isn't a county out there trying it.
Local blight ordinance coordination.
This is, uh, for the MTA meeting here about a month or so ago, uh, a number of the townships, um, are dealing with blight issues right now. And the thought occurs to me that we could, obviously the county can't adopt a blight ordinance and enforce it, but we could help facilitate the townships to, um, coordinate amongst themselves and maybe form their own, uh, we'll call it authority necessarily, but, uh, uh, civil infractions group anyway, that can hire a single blight enforcement person that can serve many townships. Uh, this is not new. I mean, there are a number of places that have done this in the past where they've just sort of grouped or gotten together and formed a group like this. You know, the challenge is, you know, if you get, uh, let's say four townships, what kind of representation do they get on the oversight board? And who gets, uh, uh, to, uh, make the call on who the blight enforcement officer is going to be and what the hours of operation are going to be and so on. I think that's something that we, and I'll speak for Ryan since he's here. I think the two of us could help coordinate with the townships and, and come up with a plan. Um, we certainly don't want to put a lot of time into this that the townships aren't interested. It just won't. It's not productive use of our time. Uh, but if they are, and I think, um, I need to have more connections than I do at that level. Um, if they are interested, I'd be happy to help in, in coordinating something like that. I, I think that's something we can contribute. Now, again, we can't pass any ordinances or enforce these, but we can certainly help bring the people together. Uh, but the other component is, do you want us doing that? Because this isn't necessarily county work at that point. Uh, so that's something that we would need your, uh, approval of before we proceed it. But it's just an idea. I, this is something that's not new to this county either. It's been talked about, I think, just about at every MTA meeting I've attended. Uh, and so maybe this would be the spark to finally get something addressed. Maybe it complicates it more. I don't know. But I think it would be worth a shot if you were interested in proceeding with that.
Commissioner Surratt?
I am definitely 100% in favor of trying to take and get them together. One meeting, see who has interest, who doesn't. I'm sure there's going to be more than enough of those townships that are going to be interested and then move forward from there. You know, make an informed decision. Who's going to raise your hand and say, yes, and we're willing to put money into it? Cause that's, that is the number one issue for a lot of the townships.
Number one issue.
They want blight person, but they don't have the money.
Or they don't want.
Or they don't have.
They don't want.
They don't have the intestinal fortitude. So I think we need to get that first meeting, lay the cards on the table and see where we go from there.
Commissioner Leo?
Uh, liability. We get involved and they say, we're going to be liable.
We're just coordinating, facilitating.
Cause I know one of the townships, they went to, they lost and it broke them. They don't want nothing to do with it.
Yeah, that's, they're not signed, they have to consider.
I don't want us to be on the hook. We're just bringing the people together.
I understand the, the thought and the rationale behind this because roads and blight are the top two at every township. However, do I think it's going to work for our township? I don't. I think it's such a rural, large area and there's so many areas that are so significantly different, um, even on the areas that I cover compared to Hill versus, let's say Prescott or Richland. Like there's this, there's such a, a significant differences and, and their blights are difference in, different in how they enforce them. And does it sound fantastic? Absolutely. So there would be no questions. Everybody would be on the same page. Um, I think it sounds like a great idea. I think it's a hundred percent up to our townships. I think this is something they need to be responsible for. You know, maybe spark conversation at the next MTA meeting. I don't know when that is. I don't know if it's been announced yet, but it's, it's nothing I want to be a part of. Um, and, and my rationale behind that is, is because these areas are, are so different. One of my townships do, does not even have a, uh, and they are not interested in a blight ordinance whatsoever. They don't really have, it's kind of weird. They don't really have a significant issue. It's actually the township that I live in, um, with blight. Um, I think since I've been serving, they've only had one complaint in, uh, Logan Township for a, a blight actual issue. So, and, and my other township, that's non-stop. It's just very strange. But that's my take on it. It sounds good. I just don't think it's real pertinent to the various areas here, in my opinion. Commissioner Scott?
All you got to do is be on the township board and go to one MTA conference and you'll find out that blight will cost you a fortune. Because you have to fight it. Every, everybody that you write up for, nine out of ten that you write up for blight are, are going to fight you. And, and they're going to fight you hard and they can go get free attorneys. Townships cannot. So what does a township do when they don't want to spend any money? They run to the county. Hey, you got to take care of it for us. This is why they're, we're doing all their planning for them. But it's only West Branch Township, the city in, West Branch and the city of.
Edwards.
Edwards, Edwards Township is the only ones. They all should be doing their own zoning. I just went to Foster Township last week and they're screaming up there and I tried to tell them, you got the county, you guys got one farm in your county, in your township, and you got a ton of lakes with resorts. And Logan Township's got a ton of farms with one lake.
Pretty much.
With a few cabins around it.
Right.
And you want me to make up the rule that fits both places? Well, I can't do that.
That's my point.
Do your own. Foster could get with Rose. Rose has the demographics and, and the geography the same as a lot. And out in your area, Logan, Churchill, Richland, you know, they're all farm communities and things like that. They can, they can combine. And they can work together, but they don't want to work together and they don't want to spend money. These townships sets on lots of fun balances. And they, they don't like to spend money.
Not all of them, but some of them have a fun balance too.
Well, if they don't, good arm up there may not. You don't have much of a tax base to start with, but, um, some do. And blight, blight is expensive. And I just soon as a county, at the county level, not even getting involved.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Yeah, blight is expensive for sure. Uh, I think this has been good conversation since, uh, you know, we had some, uh, issue in Hill Township and everybody came here to the table. And th- there's the next MTA meeting will be in Mills Township in August. I would, I think it'd be well worth for, for you guys to bring this up, let the townships, um, make some decisions. You know, I think there are some townships that could have a collaboration. They work together. Um, I'd like to have the conversation with them and then let them make the decision. I know one thing for sure that I think we could help with is, uh, I just think like the overall structure, there's a lot of confusion of how things are with the courts and blight. You know, I think if we, um, could maybe just get the right people together at the table and they can maybe have some good, strong conversations that might be able to help the whole process from A to Z, where it doesn't have to cost the township so much money. Um, I just think a lot of times they're just not informed enough about how the process works. And I think if maybe there was some good, strong conversation with everyone together from the courts to the townships, I think that may be very beneficial too.
Could you have an opportunity to talk to LaDonna about, um, taking on these cases? Okay. Can we put that on for next?
Sure. Taking on blight?
Uh, the.
So, okay.
Sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Talking about blight and that's like, okay.
Yes, that's, that is my fault. No, I, I missed, but it just made me, uh, recall that.
Right.
We need to make sure we touch base with people because. Okay. Local vendors purchasing.
Okay, um, remembering exactly how we framed the conversation when we spoke about this last, but it was mentioned after we were going through claims, uh, question about who's using the local vendors and, and who's using, uh, non-locals. Uh, and I did have a link, in fact, the entire department had meeting, uh, last Monday was focused just on this and the purchasing policy and, uh, local purchases and how the credit cards are used and so on. Um, I didn't get a feel that anybody's necessarily running to Amazon for all of their purchases. A lot of our departments are using, for instance, with office supplies in particular, you know, Office Central, uh, to do this. We do have, and I put something up just like at 5:25 tonight, just a quick, um, survey, one activity of the, of the county. And that's the general, county general that purchases most of the paper and envelopes, uh, for use by the departments, uh, just as an example. Um, there, there are definitely times when the My Deal vendor who is Staples, um, definitely has better pricing. There's no question about it. Uh, and what I've done for you here with this one department is broken down what the Office Central charges were by unit and what the My Deal Staples pricing was for that same product. I thought this was going to be an awful lot easier than it was. Uh, as we go through, uh, a claim, uh, there might be a claim that's got a purchase of, you know, $500 on it, but there might be four or five items in there. So you got to look at the inputs. I know what was purchased and what was the pricing and so on. But an exercise, I think is definitely worthwhile, uh, because what I learned here, uh, I don't think it's just a coincidence that at, uh, one point in January, it looks like our local vendor matched that My Deal price for paper. They were charging, uh, $50.99 and after a couple of purchases went through with Staples, they brought theirs down to that staple price at $36.99. That's a significant drop. Uh, I think if I'm interpreting our policy correctly, that's what you as a board would like to see. If somebody like a My Deal comes through that's not local, that we tell a local vendor, uh, about it and can you match it? In fact, our policy says at the last line that's down there, if the local vendor, um, is within 5% of the lowest responsive price, then they're given an opportunity to match that price. Um, I don't know if you want to necessarily limit that to 5%, if it's, you know, 10%, well, still tell them, here, here's, here's what it is. They'll be honest with us. They'll say, I can't match that, or they will, or they'll reduce their price, uh, somewhere in between. Uh, so I guess what I need from you, first of all, I can go through for the fiscal year, every department and do this. Again, not hard, but I think just with this one example, it's very worthwhile just to see if we are getting the best deal. And had we gone with the My Deal vendor for all of this, we would have saved, uh, $327. Well, is that worth it? I mean, that's, you know, a question that we can, um, uh, talk about philosophically, but it's a 7% difference for just this one activity. Um, you know, it would be interesting to see because some departments have very unique purchases that they have to make just to see, uh, where we line up. And I think that little bit of enlightenment might be enough, but, uh, the My Deal price is consistently beating it by, you know, several percentage points. That might change somebody's mind in terms of where they go for the product. Save the dollars that way. But if the board would like to say, uh, we will deal with local vendors only, uh, I mean, that would be pretty extreme and exclusive, but maybe, uh, if they're within 10% or, or some other number, that's a, a policy statement that you'd need to make as a board. Right now, that 5% um, rule only applies to quotes and, uh, proposals that we receive. That doesn't necessarily apply to the purchases that are under 1,500 or even under 5,000. That's not a, not the way that rule is written up. So maybe you want to lock that down a little bit more. Um, a lot, a lot of ways to approach that. Uh, I don't think there's a wrong answer to it, but if we're going to say, uh, if we're going to give the local vendor the advantage, just understand that there, there are going to be times when we're going to be paying a little bit more.
Commissioner Scott's brought this up numerous times, numerous times over the years. Um, and it, it, it sparked conversation again when Commissioner Mayhew and I have been looking at claims over the last couple of weeks. And I did notice from when we sparked this conversation to just this past week, a lot more Office Central and maybe it was just what was charged or what came through. I don't know, but a lot more Office Central. I did see the courts with a lot of orders. Um, but I saw the clerks and the treasurer's office with quite a bit of Office Central. As far as a percentage wise, I, in my opinion, and this is mine only, um, if they're able to, to come within 5%, I'd like to stay local. But Commissioner Scott?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I want, I want them to have the opportunity, opportunity to match or at least bid. You know, I didn't like the idea of all the credit cards going out because it's the ease of just going on a computer and buying someplace else. And I'm not trying to make it difficult for a department to, to buy by checking prices, but I just think that the, 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 the local, anybody in the, inside the county that's got a service or a product selling, they're a taxpayer. And they're funding us. Staples doesn't fund us. Um, you know, um, yeah, I, but just the opportunity. I, I want them to have the opportunity. And it's, it's, it's not just office stuff. I mean, in, in my tenure here, you know, was, it was light bulbs go in a transit department at one point. I, I took, I took the information from Ray. I blocked out, I, 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 I took a black marker and marked out everything, but the, the volume and the kind of bulbs that, and they, they came right back with a price that was a whole lot better than that Saginaw store. But Ray bought them from Saginaw anyway. I don't know. And then I've seen, I've seen vendor T-shirts that people are wearing, you know? He, he's, you know, I know how it works. I mean, I, I sold waste management services for years. I, I, I gave out coffee cups and golf balls and, and hockey trips and all kinds of stuff, you know?
Do you have a certain percentage in mind?
Uh, well, I always, I always said if they were within 10% that I would vote to go local. And that was just my vote. I'm not saying automatically that, uh, we go with it, but, um, that's where I was. It, and, uh, you know, I, I tried to, I tried to buy everything I can within the county or the surrounding counties. Um, but when you get into the big items, you know, it, it's tough to, it's tough not to go downstate and buy a refrigerator or out of state. For odds.
I mirror a lot of what you said, Commissioner David. Um, buy local, support local, but you know, give them the opportunity, but the price has to be competitive. And, um, I'm, I'm totally fine with a 5%.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Uh, I'm all for it.
Commissioner Surratt?
I think 5% is fair if they can match or come within 5%.
They have to get the opportunity.
Exactly. A hundred percent. I agree.
Tim, anything more you need from us?
Um, just a, a rhetorical question, more of a riddle, I guess. You take a Walmart or Home Depot, do you consider them a local business?
I do.
Now, here's, we defined in our policy, if they have an address, a physical address that they occupy in the county, then yes, they would be considered a local vendor. But the way things work online anymore, if I go online to walmart.com and I buy something, am I buying from the local business or am I outside of that?
No.
I mean, that's just the, the kind of riddle that, that you're always going to be dealing with. I, I don't think there's a right answer to it. Uh, but I, I think just this conversation alone, if they're within 5%, not matching the low price, if you're within five, but if you're within 5%, we go to you. Um, I mean, that's a little bit different than what we've worded right now. And if that's the direction we want to go, very easy to do. But I would also suggest that we write it in a way that that applies not just to everything that's over $5,000 that we're bidding up, but to everything that we're doing. Uh, and I think that's really where the, you know, the spirit of what you're, what you're intending is.
But for things over 5,000, can they come back to us for approval?
They're supposed to anyway. They're supposed to put that out to a sealed bid. We don't have that many purchases, believe it or not, that go over that, that amount. And, and even if it's over 1,500, we're getting three quotes and those, generally you get those locally. And knock on somebody's door and say how much to purchase this, writing more or whatever it might be. Um, so you at least get quotes that way, but anything over 5,000, you see, you approve. Uh, anything else is a violation.
I'm not thinking as far as walmart.com is local. No, the Walmart, in my opinion, is here in West Branch. Yeah, that's local. But walmart.com to me is not local and is not supporting our residents, but.
My opinion is if they have a fiscal address, the brick and mortar, they're employing local people, is local, even though the corporate structure is not. And on the 5% thing, and that did, I'm glad that we've got, you know, that we're looking at anything in excess of either 15 or 5,000 because, you know, 5% if I'm buying five reams of paper, 5% is, you know, differential in prices of a buck or two. If we're buying five, $10,000 item in 5%, now you're talking some serious money.
Yeah.
You know, so I just want to make sure we've got that oversight, say yea or nay on that. Tim's explaining that, so I'm.
And I think overall, you would have been pretty impressed to hear the feedback from the department heads. And they, they are very conscious of this. And the only reason any of them would say they would go to Amazon is if there was something they urgently needed tomorrow and just nobody carried it locally. So that would be their option. But nobody could really give me an example because there doesn't seem to be anybody sad to do that.
Ah, I don't claim.
But I see some Amazon stuff for claims and.
I still, I, I was like, whoa. And again, maybe it was timing. I don't know, but there was, there was 90%, and I'm probably being generous here, of online stuff.
Yeah, I do know the number of the servers that Tom ordered. He got those through Staples. They're pretty high dollar items too. So yeah, that definitely got your attention.
A lot of things that, that time got our attention. Majority of things were online. I just think that this conversation needed to happen again. And we actually, this is the first time that I've seen that in writing.
Yeah. Well, let's, I'll do this. I'll finish this exercise of going through all of the various departments. It won't take that long. And then you'll have a good set of data to work with and you can run your comparisons, you know, with, you know, are we being good shoppers on these things?
Keeps everybody. Hey, animal control expenditures hunt.
Hey.
This I brought to Tim as well, just because of claims kind of brings your attention to how much we're giving the animal shelter.
And just looking at the last two columns.
It's a lot.
Yeah, $34,000 of the last year, and we're already at $99,000 this year. But bulk of that being that contract with the shelter.
So what I brought to him was, is I agree, we have a millage now. I wanted then, Commissioner Wiltzy said he had been at the shelter and how the conversation, I just listened. I wanted to know like how many at that shelter are actual county animals. I, I agree, we have to provide funding for our animals that are there, but I have a little hesitance or reluctance to, reluctance, reluctance to totally fund that facility. I know they do. They said they do charities, some, some benefits, that kind of thing. And I haven't seen anything. I know summer's just starting to roll around. But again, when it really got my attention, doing claims these last three months and how much money is going there, you know, I, so then I want more data on, again, how many are county animals, how much money we're giving them compared to last year. I, I don't think we should be funding that facility altogether.
Comment.
Yes.
How much money's left?
I think this, he's gonna explain the spreadsheet. There's a spreadsheet on her, to us. Commissioner Wiltzy?
You know, like I said, I took the time to go there last week and I was very impressed with what I saw. But I, from the get-go, when former Commissioner Simmons was, was talking about this and the importance of this, I know they're the only player in the game, but this is a private entity that our taxpayers are funding. That's why I was completely adamant the whole time about the cost. And then also the transparency from them, the importance of what exactly this money is going to and the consistency that we're getting these reports back from them.
Tim, do you wanna take the lead on this that you have?
Let's look at just that last column there for the fiscal year. We've already reported 234,600 in revenue that's coming in. And again, the bulk of that being that millage that came in at 221. And our spending right now at just under 100,000, so 134,000, almost 135,000 yet in that fund in just its first year. And we are rapidly approaching the last quarter of the fiscal year. So there's definitely, you know, the funding there to meet our obligations for the balance of the year. So again, just for conversation's sake, if they are the only provider in the county and we want to do something else, that would lead me to think that we would end up having to open our own shelter and run it. And I will raise a red flag every day on that. I've been to enough counties where that's been run. You think blight's bad, you start dealing with animals on a daily basis. And I'm here to tell you, it's, not to say that it's a bad thing to provide, but it's definitely gonna be something that'll be challenging. And frankly, I don't think the millage that's been passed, even at the 220,000 a year, would be enough to accomplish that. Two counties I worked in, Chippewa and in Ingham County, we built new shelters because the facilities we were in were so bad. They weren't built to be shelters to begin with. In Ingham, probably the largest one, full-time staff there of at least 10 people operating that thing, always seeming to get dog fighting rings and, and people who have tons of cats that they get confiscated and get brought to the shelter. I'm not saying it's a bad service to provide, but just understand what you're getting into if you're gonna do that. We were on the news way more than I ever cared to be just for scrutinizing animals that were brought in and how they were treated even after they came into our possession. Really likes the model Isabella County used where we, in effect, turned over all the shelter, the county still owned the shelter, but leased it to a group called Hats that actually runs it. And that for me, from where I sat, was a tremendous relief in administrating the staffing issues in particular, scheduling, making sure people got there, making sure they were trained and so on. They had though, the benefactor who was able to contribute $25,000 upon request to make sure that they had a new surgical wing added to that, to make sure that a spay and neuter program is brought in twice a month and so on. So very unique. Probably not something you're gonna see happen in this community. So it is something that if you want to do, you really gotta be in 100% and just understand what you're getting into if you do it. I'm not gonna say it's impossible. Obviously, other counties have done it. But you probably are gonna spend at least every other committee, the whole meeting, talking about an animal issue that gets brought to you.
I think that definitely was not my intent. My, my questions were, is how much more money are we giving them? How mu, how many animals are we giving them? I wanna, I wanted a comparison. And just because we had all those millage monies, didn't mean we had to give them all to them. I, I know there was some negotiation, not a, not a ton. But I also agree, we shouldn't be 100% funding them alone. We, we could have left more in there for, from the millage monies versus spending the majority of it. I, I want to know how many animals they have of ours compared this year to last year. We also outsource our, our residents. Why would we have to have, and I, these are just thoughts that went through my head seeing these bills. I definitely was not thinking ahead of our own animal shelter as far as a countywide goes, but we outsource our inmates. You're, I'm sure outsourcing our animals would not be easy. That's not what I'm saying. It's just thoughts that went through my, my mind because those amount of money we're, we're giving them is a lot. I just want to know what we're getting, what the residents are getting for the monies that we're, we're giving. Commissioner Scott?
I voted, I voted no. I, I'll tell you right upfront, I couldn't care less about dogs. I voted no twice. How, what's, what did the Millie say? The Millie said that we were gonna support a dog facility.
An animal control program.
An animal control program. I don't remember the exact.
I thought it said something about funding the facility and everything, aid facility. That's why I asked.
Either are making the service.
That's why I asked it. Can we, can we, you know, can we find out if people got kennels and can they do the job and everything else? I wanted to look out there and see what was in the county.
And there's license criteria. So if they're out there, it's possible.
Well, we looked around and nobody else could handle it. Ross Collins got a fully staffed deal over there. They got like five or four or five people work there. You know, this millage wouldn't pay for that. I mean, you know, this millage here probably paid for a building and maybe two people and that's it, you know, fully. I think the cheapest way is go a contract, uh, contract services, but but like they, they came and told us if, if it only, if we only paid for the animals that we took, then they wouldn't be able to stay in, in business. They needed our money to stay in business. And, you know, I sat right here and said, you got room to expand. Oh, I don't think so. I don't, I don't think we got room on the property, really.
Did they say?
All during COVID, had a semi sitting out in the parking lot.
They were full for a period of time.
All during COVID, the semi sat out in the parking lot and there was enough room on the property for a 50-foot trailer, eight feet wide. You couldn't add a 50-foot addition, eight feet wide on your building? Oh, I don't know about that. I don't even know who in the heck we're dealing with.
Yeah, we haven't heard from anybody since.
No, we haven't heard a thing. And, and I asked about.
Yeah, we reported after the last quarter and this quarter, June is the last month of this quarter. So I would expect something by mid-July.
Well, I wasn't in favor of being a tax for this anyway. So.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
I mean, I think I, I said how I feel about this.
Commissioner Sorek?
As a taxpayer, when this contract was entered, I told, when I saw the price that the county board of commissioners had agreed to, to pay them, I would like to know when that contract was negotiated, they, or have they shown you or shown us now a budget as to how much money they're spending of non-county dollars? Are we funding that shelter 100%? That is my question. How much, what percentage are we funding them and what percentage are they getting funds from outside? If we're at 100%, there's something wrong there, you know? Because they've got animals that are not just, I'll bet you they have more animals that are not brought by the animal control officer than that, you know. So I'd, I'd like to see a breakdown
Right.
of their budget. I'd like to see the animals, like Mr. David wants to see. So I, I want to see it in black and white. What's your budget? County dollars versus private donations, however they survived before the county started to fund them? Because they were operating for years without county dollars. Then all of a sudden, oh.
Which they did, they did show us during the discussions that actually we were costing them more money than, than we were giving them.
Sounds like.
It's, pardon me?
Sounds like a jail.
At one point in time. Paul, do you have anything to add to this conversation?
Oh, I, I've taken notes based on the conversation as far as to get back to the animal control and the shelter. I can recall some of these conversations that we've had, you know, shelters being full, you know, taking people, swapping dogs with UP shelters. I mean, it, it's a big issue across the state as far as shelters and intake of animals and that type of stuff. I, I can't begin to comment because I didn't have time to research. Some of these questions are being posed, but we can definitely move that animal control and shelter. I do know a high percentage from my conversations with the shelter is that those animals or the dogs specifically are directly related to some type of animal control activity. When you would stop, there was the mother and nine puppies, I believe, that she showed.
Yes.
As far as, and when those nine puppies become a certain age size, then they've got to be moved into their individual kennels, which they communicated to me, where do we put them? We give them our current numbers that they have in the facility.
Are they a no kill filter?
They are.
Yeah.
So that's another issue. So I've taken notes on it as far as the discussion that's going on, understanding kind of what you're kind of looking at and.
And they've been able to take all of our animals in? Has there been any issues at all?
No, they, because of the contract, they work with animal control very well. It's been a very good start to this program since inception with the animal control officer. Shelter is working very well as far as managing intakes and managing the dogs that are there. Yeah, they're fine tuning. There's some things that, you know, the control officer is exploring and the shelter is still getting used to as far as reporting processes and that type of stuff. So based on this, I'll, we'll give that to animal control and the shelter and we'll.
I also enjoyed seeing Scott's reports quarterly as far as calls and collections of animals. And if, if you can have the new animal control officer when he's, gets his bearings and, and really gets rolling, if he's able to just throw them on our iPads for all of us to see. I enjoyed looking at that.
That was part of that first report. And the intent is, is to make that a conductive report. So when you get the shelter report, it's also gonna have the stats that go through animal control. If you look back at that, make sure that you're seeing that. But the idea of that report is gonna be a comprehensive animal control because the contracts for shelter services for accounting functions. So, you know, we'll take a look at that based on the conversation today.
Stat was sent in his out monthly when I was on the board previously.
Oh, was it monthly or quarterly?
Yeah, it was more than quarterly.
I was.
It seemed like we got an update every month if I'm not mistaken.
And pictures and.
Exactly. Which was great. You know, I'd like to see it more often than quarterly.
Well, until he, until he started reporting to the sheriff's office.
We built it into our.
When, when you were here before.
Right. He wasn't.
Yeah, he wasn't.
Well, he's now submitting just like a deputy daily log report of his activity and that's being filed as like a deputy. So that goes to our administrative assistant who then compiles stats and we then carve out animal control activity, animal control program.
Can we have that sep, I mean, it can be part of your report, but can we have it separately on a separate sheet?
Like, looking back at that first report that came from the shelter, there should be animal control stats that are a part of that. So you'll get, I mean, do you want it separate from the shelter?
I personally, yes. I would like it just from the animal control officer.
Well, it is separate within the body of the report, but what we're sending is what the shelter sends us as far as their report shelter services and then what animal control is doing by himself. So that's one big report that.
It's just a combined, but they're, they're separate, but they're combined. They're in one report, but there's two different sections.
Yeah. So it's shelter services is what we get from the center as far as that. And then the statistics that we put together as far as calls and complaints and activity that's going on from the animal control. The idea is that report is you done in this quarterly or administrative system will assist as far as compiling statistics that are collected from the daily log. That's what we're building right now with the current animal control and shelters. So, but I've got my notes as far as this discussion. We'll look to facilitate some more information.
Anything else on that, guys?
Well, I, I, in that conversation about funding, I, I told, I said to the shelter people, keep up your regular funding, your, your fundraising and things like that. Don't get addicted to just our money. That's what the libraries did. Libraries got addicted to just penal. And then all of a sudden that ran out and they're screaming, oh, you guys should be giving it to us. No. You're private entities. You should have been fundraising all the way along the line.
They are.
But you didn't. So.
That, the back of the bricks they're reported on, they were there. They had generous donors that brought a base there on thousands of dollars.
They, the animal shelter?
The animal shelter.
Okay.
Good.
Control officer made an appearance. Ray Shelter had their volunteers out there. Volunteers brought baked goods and, and some deck backs and that type of stuff. So they were present during that whole luncheon at Hodges and they did bring in revenue as far as donations over sales. So they are continuing, they constant with their cans, I do know.
Well, that was the same thing with, when I mentioned about adding on because they were talking about limited space. Well, how about add on? Well, we can't afford to. You're gonna get $75,000 a year for the next five years. You mean you can't carve out 10, 15,000 that you don't have now? You don't have it now. And all of a sudden, you're gonna get it. You can't carve out that and over the next five years, build something?
Well, we need to see if they, maybe they have adequate space. I don't know, but it's nice.
I just think, you know, they gotta be business minded, what they're doing though.
It is nice to hear that they were out and about. All I've heard is they have an upcoming yard sale. So I haven't seen or heard a lot from them. So it's nice to hear that they have been.
There's been part of the discussions as far as taking care of the shelter that currently. We've heard of the discussions as far as taking care of the shelter that currently exists. We do some long range planning for what. What the future holds with the current thing. So let's, I know that's been discussed because I brought it to the table with them. Take the information that I collected, this conversation.
Add one more thing.
Yep.
Uh, so this conversation doesn't surprise me at all. I mean, this is just us doing our due diligence. I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Sorek. When we made that decision, it was not easy. But I mean, obviously the county residents felt the need for this. We saw the need that, I mean, share, the undersheriff up to the point after Scott resigned. I mean, the amounts of phone calls and the need for the service. So, um, you know, it's just our job now to make sure that this money is being managed, right? I'm looking forward to the report here after this quarter ending to see where they come back at. I do know one other item she did tell me when I was there is the roof's in pretty bad shape. There's some leaks. They were getting estimates for, uh, for a new roof. So it will be, you know, I mean, we wanna see that. We wanna see what this money's going for. Um, and again, it is good to see that they are, from what I see and from what we hear, supplying a good service. Our new animal patrol officer is doing a great job from what we see and what we hear. Um, I do know the cans, so they are still trying to raise money. I know she told me they took back cans a couple of weeks ago and they like fifteen hundred dollars. You know, and there's more cans already coming back in. So, um, I'm just interested to see what this next report is. And again, we're just doing our due diligence and, and hopefully things will look good and we can continue to move forward.
Commissioner Mayhew.
I thought when we did this, that the money followed the animals. They got the money because they were the only game in town, but if another one comes, the money follows the animals is what I thought is how it was worded. When we had them discussion.
It'd be like any other county service, you know?
Right. If there was another dog place over here and we took our dogs here in the county, they would get some of the money.
Yes.
They get it because they're the only game in town. Yes, I believe how that was done.
Right.
Good with that? Hey.
Yeah, I just wanna, I'd just like to see their budget and to see how much funding they're getting from what sources.
Paul will, Paul will continue.
If they're willing to, hopefully they're willing to share that with us.
They will. I think they will be. Uh, employee turnover rate. Tim, I'm, I, I appreciate this information. I did go to you as well asking for this information. I'm a huge advocate of longevity retention. This information that you, you gave us on this, does this include, um, retirements?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any voluntarily separating from the county is counted as a voluntary separation.
So I, I assume that by looking at the title. Um, which I, I was hoping there was a way to separate that. I think retirement.
Yeah, if you, if you want to take that factor out, yeah, that can be done.
I would. I don't think retirement's a, a, a fair to the department. Um, the reason I'm asking this, obviously longevity retention, um, we want individuals to stay. Uh, we wanna know why, why we are.
Frame when they leave.
Why, yes, yes. Why they are leaving, whether it's workload, whether it's ours, whether it's pay. Um, whether it's leadership, whether it, whatever it may be. I think we, uh, need to figure out exactly why and if we can do anything to, um, attempt to retain as much as possible. Um, also Commissioner Sorek and I are on the personnel committee. And when Commissioner Simmons and I were on there, we'd had discussion and planned on changing that as far as exit interviews. Um, right now, how it's worded in that policy, the department head does the exit interview.
No, it shouldn't be that way. I agree.
Um, we plan on.
Independent.
We plan on at least having another option if they're not comfortable going to the department head. Um, for doing the exit interviews. I think that will help us gather more information as far as why. If we see a common, um, department with, with numerous turnovers. Uh, if we can figure out what the problem is and, and maybe come up with a solution, whether it's education, whether it's training, you know, we can't change somebody. But we can change their approach.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we have to offer that in an attempt to hopefully retain some of these employees.
Goes to Commissioner Scott's, uh, years ago, the Dale Carnegie course for elected officials of department.
I think, yes, I think this is part of our due diligence and I think we need to, uh, be fair. Across through every department versus certain departments as far as looking at these numbers. Um, again, it's just figuring out, uh, what the problem is or if there even is one and trying to solve it. So, yes.
I, I love data, so it's always good to see data. Uh, would we be able to, just so we could kind of see surrounding areas? Would we be able to see like, say, for example, Roscommon County, um, and see if, what type of shortfalls are there having possibly as well? With certain departments and stuff, just so we can kinda, you know, have something to kind of look at.
If I was the administrator there, I'd say yes, because I'd make sure we have it, but I don't know what other counties have as far as data. This was not difficult for me to grab. The hard part was formatting it, honestly. The data's there because we do our seamless docs and our personnel, uh, uh, action, uh, request forms that we have filled out. Anytime somebody retires or just resigns or whatever, form comes in. Uh, and so it's very easy to gather that. That's why it's very easy for me to take out the retirements.
Example equalization, you know, the individual we had invested quite a bit of money into, which was a family member of yours to training and years of expertise. Um, came right to us and said, you know, hey, it's, it's a money thing. I'm taking another job for, obviously I don't wanna leave, but it's a money thing. The other individual who had a lot of expertise there is retiring. So, you know, I don't think that that's an accurate. Um, number there, but I, I, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Wiltie, but I wanna hear from our, our resident, our, uh, employees. To see what. Their problem is, what their issues are, if there are any at all, and see if we can attempt to solve them. I'm all in favor of training, uh, leadership. It's, uh, team building, uh, different ideas.
Retention's important. I mean, another good thing we have going for us is financially, we're finally heading in a direction where we're, have some financial stability and. You know, we're gonna keep heading in that right direction, therefore we can be more competitive with pay and that will help. But no, this is good. Retention is very, very important and our county employees are very, very important.
And it also comes down to a liability. If, if some employees are, are making some remarks or some comments about how they're being treated. Um, we need to take that very serious as well and they need to have a safe place to go. And right now they may not. So, and I'm in favor of, of in-person training, not the online stuff. But that, if you can continue this, can you, if you can put this on, I, I think we all really need to see this. Um, take out the retirees. I don't think that's fair at all to those departments.
A separate line for.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, we don't wanna lose the data. I wanna see a trend that.
That's fair.
We wanna see the, uh, trend in. Has there been a trend? Well, I know since I've been a commissioner, it's been a big trend. I think that one year, I think we lost like seven people to retirement. You know, uh, overall, and, um, I think we're gonna see another wave here soon enough. I just, I'd like to see a line on involuntary separation also. Can we, can we see something like that?
I think I, I mean, it's a small enough county. I can figure out, you know, which ones are, are that case.
Well, they can, they can focus on a particular department. You know?
When I say involuntary, I mean somebody's terminated.
Is that what you mean by that? That's why I took it out.
Did mean that, but then again, we've had some involuntary where they were not.
Like layoffs?
Yeah, where they were laid off.
Layoffs aren't part of that.
See, that's not that. I get that.
Okay, I get what you mean. That's involuntary, yeah.
You see that?
Well, again, I, you know, I, I just think that when we have departments coming in and asking for jobs and positions and, and, you know, we seem to. In, in my opinion, from what I've observed, we seem to, um, ask more questions of certain departments versus other departments. And again, finding out if it's what the issue is, workload, monies, uh, I, I don't know. We, we need to figure that out. In my opinion.
I would say you're, you're including the elected official as an employee.
Yes.
I would say that, that out of the five, five elected officials they're in. See, they're, they're not gonna separate out.
Not voluntarily.
They're, they're. Maybe, maybe weren't hired by. County now.
That makes sense.
Equalization, um, infor- information, that's different. Um, uh, transit's different, you know? But the, the elected, the five elected officials, I don't think should be in there.
Well, I've got those notes. If you think of anything else, you know, you went home tonight or something, send it to me. It's not hard. I mean, just. And I go for, uh, you know, simplify it as much as I can with an aggregate like this, but these are great. If you wanna see those breaking out, they're all there. So.
For sure retirement, I, I, for sure, I, that shouldn't be utilized. That shouldn't be showing up as a negative against the department.
Well, I, I mean, it's like Karen's office. I mean, she's elected, she, there's really three employees in there.
I agree.
And, and if one leaves, adds and stands now, it's only a twenty-five percent reduction. But when it's three, it's thirty-three.
Right.
Sixty-six if it's two, you know? So.
Well, I think.
And, and, and equalization, what happens there is a hundred percent.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So to say, to say it's less than, well, an equalization though, that, that's leaving Randy there too. Because he is a hired employee, so.
But that.
That is accurate.
That information is there, how many total employees?
Yeah.
So, will, will you keep this on, on our iPads and update this?
They will.
Okay. I don't wanna lose sight of this. Uh, item K, July third. Commissioner Sorek.
I know I'm not gonna be able to be here on July the third. I don't know what anybody else, but I certainly am heading out of town for the fourth of July weekend. And I didn't know if anybody would wanna move the meeting to Tuesday like we did because of the Juneteenth holiday or not, or it's the.
I would like to.
Karen and I can have a little bit of a discussion regardless of where we started the meeting. So, I mean, we could do Tuesday. I.
That's your rule in the, in the, uh, board rules is that if you're not gonna meet the Thursday, you do the Tuesday prior. That doesn't exclude anything else that's baked in already, so.
So that'd be July first?
Yeah.
Tuesday.
Are you guys okay with that?
Why not? I guess so. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna stay in town. I mean. I gotta be here for.
The fireworks.
My braids is parade.
Yeah, okay. Mission comments. Commissioner Sorek, any? Commissioner Mayhew.
I just got one question. How are we doing on the? Oh, we hired them people to take care of the dead people. And, and we, and we, we, we shortened. I pulled up.
Oh, I'm getting my monies back?
Um. They said we had twenty-two and we shortened it back. I just wondered how many people we've had.
You're talking about autopsies?
Yeah, there you go.
That was all on there last time. They'll give us quarterly reports.
You're gonna see a report, uh, for next Thursday. They've submitted one for me, so you'll see an update.
Just wondering how he was doing.
It's actually pretty neat. The last report on there was kinda creepy, but it's on there.
That's all right. I just, you know what I mean? They, they told us we, we had a whole lot and we did, we opted out.
Oh, I see what you're saying. How many autopsies she had said, we, yes, according. Had an overkill, maybe, possibly. Literally. Mission comments.
Yeah.
I don't have anything right now.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Comments, not reports, right?
Right, comments only.
I'm good.
Public comment. Dirk, do you have anything? Thanks for coming.
That was all good. I wish I heard it softly.
A comment on the phone? Can we have a closed session?
Is this slow?
Oh, for public comment?
Yeah, I got.
Moving. Which head are you?
I'm gonna wear both of them. How's that?
Which is what?
The mayor and.
Let's play dumb.
There's nothing wrong with that because we don't know unless he does.
The first report is the undersheriff. Just real quickly, the prosecutor's bike rodeo in Mills Township went really well on Saturday.
The what?
The bike rodeo. The kids came with their bicycles. Uh, we registered roughly thirty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight bikes. Uh, so the kids seemed to have a good time. You can see that.
I was just gonna say.
I didn't prepare myself as I should have for four hours out in a blacktop parking lot with no cover. But, um, I just wanted that real quick. Second, I've got some unfortunate news switching hats to the city side. Um, our Saskatchewan Centennial, one hundred and fiftieth celebrations this Saturday. We unearthed the time capsule from the centennial celebration that they buried in nineteen seventy-five. So when we unearthed the vault, the vault seal has been compromised. Uh, there was over four inches of water within the cement vault.
Oh.
Unearthed.
Oh.
Uh, the contents of the vault were contained in two plastic yellow bags, double wrapped. But that sitting in water for how many years we. So unfortunately, we're gonna lose a lot of the contents of that vault and that was set to be displayed or opened, if you will, and displayed. Saturday as part of the events and what we're seeing is that the vast majority, all the paper products and clothing and a lot of that stuff.
It's terrible.
So.
My old bell bottoms that are in there then.
If you put bell bottoms in there, then yeah. Unfortunately, the clothing right along with the paper and the ink and all that, they've been sitting in water for, we don't know how many years. It was moved at one point. It's not the original location. It was moved to that location as part of the city hall building. Uh, but unfortunately tomorrow they're gonna pull the contents. I'll see what's salvageable. There are some trinkets in there that will still be able to make. Displays and whatnot, but, um, we were, oh, there's letters to families from, you know, family members back and. Those are pretty much all gone. So I just wanted to share that unfortunate news. If you would share that with anybody that may be coming down to participate with it Saturday.
Sat.
So it's all day on Saturday. So you have the airport fly in and on Saturday in the morning, but the events start at. We should have brought the flyer. I wanna say nine o'clock and it goes all day downtown.
Downtown West Branch?
Downtown West Branch. So it's gonna be closed off. You're gonna have, uh. Wood carving and they're gonna be out there doing lumberjack competition.
Oh, really?
Be food vendors, music, uh, the vault was supposed to be open and the contents displayed. Uh, there's all kinds of events all day long. So downtown will be closed. We expect, uh, two thousand people roughly is what the numbers are being thrown out. They're dependent on the weather.
Yeah.
So hopefully people leave the fly-in and come to.
That's what we're hoping, that they'll go out, participate with the fly-in and then come downtown. You know, some of the events are in the morning, so. You know, like eleven o'clock is when we'll recognize certain city, like Mayor Todd Thompson, who served thirty-two years as mayor within the city. Several other past city manager, Pat McGinnis will be on. We've confirmed that he was longstanding city manager.
How long have you been mayor now?
Well, I don't know, seven years now. Seven, you know, I've been on council. But at mayor, it's seven. So at the end of this term, we'll be eight years. I'll serve as mayor for the city, so.
You got your hands full.
A little bit.
Yes.
I should have commented. I know I've said a lot over the last couple of months, but Saturday is the fly-in. Breakfast starts at eight o'clock out there. The breakfast is delicious. And then I know, um, Dr. Brady, Dennis is gonna have his jets there. He's got.
Doctor Short.
Doctor Short, what, Brady?
Where'd you get that from?
I don't know. Uh, Doctor Short, I know he's F sixteen, you know, that is awesome to see. That fly-in is awesome. Starts at eight o'clock breakfast Saturday.
Full session.
I'd make a motion. We're gonna close session to consider strategy connection with negotiation or collective bargaining agreement pursuant to Mr. Cabal Law fifteen point. Two, six, eight, C.
Motion, Commissioner Sorek? Support from Commissioner Scott, roll call vote.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Danny David.
Yes, Craig Scott.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Um, your choice.
Thank you, sir.
See you tomorrow.
Another few, I'm leaving in the morning.
Oh, gosh. Motion of support to come back in open session, roll call vote. Mark Sorek.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Tony David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, right? Okay.
I'm in favor.
Have a good night, everyone.
Leave us hanging.
Thank you. Good night, Paul.